Hello, everybody. Sorry that was so loud. We're going to go ahead and begin the council meeting if everyone would stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mark, would you lead us out, please?
...to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand as one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do our roll call, I want to introduce you to two appointed aldermen. We have Craig Lockwood and Laura Isman. Craig will be in Ward 3 and Laura will be Ward 4. So, we welcome them.
Thank you.
Here. And Kara, would you start us off with a roll call, please?
Lyon.
Ward 1 here.
Shaffer.
Ward 1 here.
Dylan.
Ward 2 here.
Massey.
Ward 2 here.
Ruffing.
Ward 3 here.
Lockwood.
Ward 3 here.
Carter.
Ward 4 here.
Isman.
Ward 4 here.
Do we have any comments from the floor about this agenda tonight? Okay, we'll move on then. First one on the agenda is approval of the amendments of April. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next is the approval of the bills. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next is the approval of the monthly reports, city clerk, city treasurer, court clerk for April. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the first resolution we have on the schedule is Resolution Number 39, amending Resolution 30, deficit financing from the April 1st meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion on this one? I can lead out with letting you know this is the same document as we approved. The state asked us to put the bill numbers on there and send it back to them. So it's really more of a housekeeping thing than anything else. Okay? No discussion? We'll need a roll call for this. Kara?
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffing.
Yes.
Lockwood.
Yes.
Carter.[11] 40.
Yes.
Isman.
Yes.
Okay. The next one is Resolution Number 40. This is a local law amending the general city law, Article 4, Paragraph 27, Section 11, C1, commercial district zoning. This is what the hearing was all about. So we were, in this, anyway, I'll move along. Do I have a motion on this?
Motion.
A second?
A second.
Okay. And this, as I was saying, is about the commercial district adding two apartments on each floor. And I think we really didn't have any discussion about it to any great extent. Any questions? Discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffing.
Yes.
Lockwood.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Isman.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is Resolution Number 41, public hearing, local law number 5, establishing a uniform schedule of fees for code department. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Who motioned, I'm sorry?
Tom, you motioned?
I motioned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, this is updating our codes, and this is just for a hearing we're requesting. The codes that have had the same fines for the last 20 years, so they needed to be updated. So Bianca's been working on this for a couple of weeks now to bring them up to speed and to organize them in a fashion that anybody could pick it up and know what's going on. Any other discussion?
Good June 3rd.
Oh, thank you, yes. We had a typo on the resolution that says that the hearing is today, which it is not. So it's for June the 3rd. So if you'd make a note on there, that's June the 3rd.
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffing.
Yes.
Lockwood.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Isman.
Yes.
Okay. The next resolution is 42, urban renewal contract. This is a contract to replace Mark Fee, who retired recently. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. And as you recall, that this is a position for shared services, that we have arrangement with Urban Renewal, where we basically provide a person to come in and to handle that position for them, and they pay us as they draw down on grants and things like that. And the person that we're looking at is Jacob Manning. I think his background is in your folder. He's got good finance background, a lot of business plan development, keenly interested in developing Little Falls. He bought property here, business owner. So, I think he's a good candidate. Do I have any other comments? Discussion?
Mayor, will the full Mark Fee stay on as the candidate?
He'll come in and help us anytime we need it, but he's really wanting to be retired. He wants to spend time on the golf course. But yeah, he left it in really good shape, so everything is pretty easy to follow. But he did say he'd come in to onboard Jacob, you know, when he needs it. So, okay, and then...
I just wanted to add, I've met Jacob a few times. He seems a really strong candidate for this. I think that he's go-getter. He's seen a lot of meetings.
Good to know.
So, from my experience, he's been a great candidate.
Awesome. Yeah, his references checked out. I mean, everybody seems to like him. He's, the interaction that I've had with him, he's been extremely professional. He's, you know, immediately after a meeting or a call, he's back on there, you know, sending me a note, thanking and all of that. So that's the level of customer service we want for our communities. So he was really happy that he was interested in the position. We need a roll call on this one, too.
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffing.
Yes.
Lockwood.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Isman.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is Resolution Number 43. It's a ban for LED lights. This was a project that began several years ago, I think. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Chet, do you want to give us an explanation just to start the conversation?
So this is the financing for the New York Power Authority project that started a couple of years ago. It was slow going at times, with equipment, equipment being tight and such, but all that work is completed by New York Power Authority. The lights are up the city, transition over. Now, we're closing up on the project, and we need to pay, need to pay New York Power Authority a degree amount. Now, according to Sarah, we have a couple options, more financing, one of the options, most of the New York Power Authority, if their interest rates weren't as attractive as it's going on on our own, so that's the reason.
There is the dollar amount, too. Sarah and I are working with NiP to negotiate. There has been a discontinuing of the software, and the company that was providing it to us in contract is no longer around. They're, you know, going out of business, and so won't be there to provide long-term support. So we'd like a concession on that, and still working on that. So the dollar amount will be decided at a later day. It's per the contract, but certainly, we're hoping to do a little bit better on that.
So the water supply will be the maximum amount of improvement?
Yeah, I think that they should discount that. They offered another software opportunity if we wanted to pay, what was it, like $300,000 to get a new technology component, but still continue paying for the old one? That makes no sense. So, so far, so good. We've had good conversations. Now it's elevated to the higher-ups, and we're waiting for a call back. Any other discussion on this one? Okay. I need a roll call vote again.
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffing.
Yes.
Lockwood.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Isman.
Yes.
Okay, and the next one is Resolution Number 44, appointing permanent position for the county clerk in the city treasurer's office. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? I can tell you, the person that we're looking at has been working in a part-time position in the treasurer's office, and she has been incredible to work with. She is energetic, personable, everybody likes her. She's smart, and we'd just like to move her from part-time to full-time position. Any questions? Any comments? Sarah, do you have any thoughts since she's been working for you?
No, she's doing a great job, so I'd really like to keep her into a permanent position rather than she can keep going here and get benefits and things like that, so...
In the treasurer's department, we need smart people, so. Happy that she's here and wants to continue with us. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffing.
Yes.
Lockwood.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Isman.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is Resolution 45, the Trail Town. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. This is a resolution to solidify our relationship with the Empire Bike, Empire Trail bike system that goes from, you know, one area on the trail to the other. We were designated as a Trail Town candidate last year, and we've gone through all of the procedures that were necessary, and they have awarded us basically the Trail Town designation. So this is our commitment to keep this going and also to set aside a separate committee, which we do have a separate committee. Dave, would you want to say anything about Trail Town, because you've been closely aligned with it?
Yeah, so what they do is, they started this program three years ago. They picked four communities along the Empire State Trail. They made them provisional, and then they gave you a series of steps that you had to do in order to become a permanent one. So Rome was one of the first ones and things like that. We were the second group at the beginning of last year, where they kind of nominated us to be this Empire State Trail Town. They gave us a whole list of things to do. We worked through that all last year. Part of that included a trail count and trying to figure out how many people were using it. The whole goal of this program from parks and trails is to drive people off the trail into the community and get them to spend money here. So our commitment is that we're going to keep trying to get bike-friendly businesses. We're going to, we have a Facebook page for the trail. Anytime they have an event, you know, we try to help them. And it's to draw those people into the community. So this resolution is part of that process of saying, okay, you guys are now permanently fit. So we filled out final paperwork, they approved it. When we do the resolution, then they'll come back and say, you guys are now officially designated a permanent Empire State Trail Town. They do all kinds of marketing. They've already put us in their materials, they've got websites, they've got brochures. We're already listed in there. They're assuming that we're going to pass this, and it's going to be okay. But it's a great deal, you don't have to spend any money on marketing. You just have to make sure the trail stays neat and clean, and we've done to have to clean up some things like that, and there's some signage and things like that they want us to do. We've got a grant from the county for signs. So we're going to be working on that through this year, trying to improve the trail and people's knowledge of it.
Okay. So want to bring this motion to the floor, to bring this to the floor? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The committee, the Trail Town committee, what's that going to be up to? How many people are going to be on it?
We've had one, because we've had to form one over the last year to be able to accommodate all of that. And there is, and I think there's six people on it, is that correct?
Twelve.
Oh, there's 12?
Twelve, twelve now.
Okay.
So we had a couple more cyclists that said they wanted to be on, and so...
Right. So it's a mixture of people from the city that are interested in cycling, for the most part, and economic development folks.
Laura's on the call.
Yeah, Laura's on there.
Can we have a city government representative on the committee?
Well, you will now.
We will.
With Laura.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor, so are there any restrictions on anything like, sometimes they put some restrictions on, if you redo your streets, you have to have this, or something like that?
They came through and they did a survey, and they pointed out critical areas that were problems, like if you take 167, Fled Brower, where it comes across right there. If you look at the signage, for instance, it says Canalway Trail, right? There's no such thing anymore, that went away. So they've, and the street markings out there on the flip where the trail comes across the road right there, there aren't any. And so, that's town to the falls, so our goal would be to go to them and say, hey, can you paint some stripes here and make it safer for the cyclists? Signs, we're going to try and create a Little Falls Harbor Loop as opposed to that Canalway Trails thing. So they've given us permission to take those signs down. The money we got from the county, we're intending to replace those signs and call it Little Falls Harbor Loop. So we still want those cyclists to come through that area, but they've always had that problem crossing 167 right there, because there's no markings, there's no stripes on the road, there's nothing. So what that committee would do is work with DLT to try and convince them, we need something there to make it safer. But there's no restrictions, there's just suggestions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, roll call.
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffing.
Yes.
Lockwood.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Isman.
Yes.
Okay. And the next one is Resolution 46, water distribution feasibility study for neighboring communities. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. I'll lead out with a discussion on this one. This is something that I've been working on with the 11 municipalities that we meet in a regional collaboration group that I started last year. And the idea was to get together and to see what could be done regionally to solve a lot of our problems, to reduce some of the costs that we have. And it's taken off, and we have actually another six members that, of the communities nearby, that really want to participate as well. One of the first things that we discovered was in the topics of what people were most interested in, and it was water. They wanted city water. And the problem with a lot of the municipalities that are near us, I have wells, and the wells are old, and they're, as you can see, Herkimer was in the news not too long ago. We, you know, we made the news with some of the things that we're trying to upgrade in our technology for filtration and things like that. So we started looking at what we could do as far as the city. And Chet has been working with me on this, and we have a lot of water, a ton of water, with, what is it, 20, one streams or creeks under Main Street. I mean, water is coming at us from all over. And we have the different watersheds up around the Spruce Lake area. We have, you know, several different prime facilities, and then we also have the Spruce Lake Dam area that can provide more water from the Klondike that allows us to clean that water and set up another primary source. So we have lots and lots of water. Chet, do you recall the numbers of the volume that we have coming out?
Right now, the city uses around 2.7 million gallons a day in the watershed. That's even with all the losses that we have. Realistically, we sell around 1.5 million gallons a day. So, once we continue with that, we also have the capacity to deliver up to, I see anywhere from 12 to 14 million gallons per day from our watershed. So we certainly have a capacity in the watershed. This study certainly is the next step. What can we do with that as a city?
So the water feasibility study, we have two members of the Department of State that are at each meeting with us, and they are involved in rural communities and water infrastructure, things like that. They love the idea of us being able to deliver to towns like Dowshville to augment their current system with additional water when they need it. And town of Little Falls, potentially. Illion also is very interested. Town of Herkimer, Village of Herkimer, leaving somebody out, but, you know, the smaller communities in between where Manheim, Danube, some of the ones that are right around our area, can be a big benefit for them, and it will provide a sustainable revenue source for the city once it's up and running. We did a project, we proposed a project a couple of years ago that was going to be a repackaging, a repackaging company outside of Dowshville. And if you take that as a template for what is possible with regard to revenue, just that one facility was going to be $950,000, something like that, a year revenue to the city for water. And we didn't even get into the sewer part of it. We have to really grow in that way to be able to be a hub of services if we're going to sustain ourselves. Our population is too small. We will continue to grow it, but it's a lengthy process, and we have too few taxpayers. And that's been the problem. We, you know, our taxes from property tax, it hit maybe a third of what we need to run the city. So we have to look at other sources. So this is what this is about. I proposed in this resolution that we would cover the match in it, because we've got our grants right now for our water filtration and moving in that direction, the whole design of the water filtration solution is one that's scalable to be able to add membranes every time we want to scale up with another community or whatever. So all of the people who have been interested in this have gone to their boards, and three of them have signed off already. So this is us taking the lead, and we would be covering, it's a $100,000 grant that we'd be going after through the state, and we would have to match it 50%, so we're looking at $50,000. But I do believe we could probably get that covered with our grants, I'm hoping so. But once we get past the feasibility study, if we continue on this path, any of the construction work was at 90% they would cover. So that's, it's really a nice grant to get into. Do you have any discussion?
I have a quick question. Would this study be looking only externally into like delivering water from the city to other municipalities, or would we also look internally at what we need to fix in our own system to get to the plant where we'll be there?
Well, you probably remember a while back, we had the water emergency, right? So the thinking is designing something that not only fixes our water emergency, but then moves up to the level where we would be able to accommodate other communities as well. So yeah, from the get-go, that has been the plan. So the membrane system and all, I think Chet's talked about that before, that allows us tremendous flexibility, but it also solves a very big problem we have on our hands with the sand filters and just not being able to do the job. It also would open up Spruce Lake, which right now, the water is perfectly fine to drink, but who wants the color of tea coming out of their faucet? So this takes out the tannins in that water and allows it to be another primary, which would be fabulous. We won't know, we're going to be testing it out. We have one of the membranes coming June, July?
In the June, June, early July, and I thought that would bring around to contracts. That's going to be fast forward, okay, June, July.
Yeah, so we'll be able to test it out, see, does it really work like we expect it to? Chet and Rick Smith have been out on field trips where it's been in use and talking to the people. So I think it's a good direction for us, and it certainly fits the design that the Department of Health is excited about. They like the idea of what we're doing. The Department of State likes the idea of what we're doing to collaborate more closely with regional communities to provide a hub of services. So they've tried to do this sort of thing before and different things, but water is something that I think we can, we can handle. There's also some big grants floating around there, but if we get lucky, they can be reallocated in our direction, which would speed up the process of us being able to do this. But first and foremost, we're fixing our own, and we're taking that same technology and building up to scale for the future.
And I know, you know, we mentioned a few times about how we lose a lot of the water that we do filter into the ground after we're building. Is that how we're planning to do the work?
Well, you're getting into my mayor comments, but I'm going to go ahead and tell you now because I think it's important. The water treatment facility, we have been fixing leaks like they're going out of style. We've got plenty of them. The last two big ones were $200,000 each. So we reduced our, you know, I think I've talked about it before, we were losing $300,000 a year with water leaking on the ground. We have, by my calculations, the $500,000 that we were pulling away from that, reduced it to, you know, close to 30%, or about $88,000, working with Nicole. So we'll, we'll see, but that was substantial. That means from the 2.7 million gallons we were producing, we actually don't have to produce quite that much. We lowered that level to 2.2, so with that extra $500,000. The sinkhole was huge, that was a huge find. So it was bad, we shut down the water and everything, but on the good side, we were able to plug it up and fix that leak, which was huge. We've been going around doing lots of little leaks everywhere, and you never know what you're going to get when you start dating. But yes, so that just has helped a lot, so we don't have to produce as much water to get the net result that we need to deliver to the houses.
And then my, my other question, there's a lot of pieces, I know, it's a whole puzzle that's part of our system. I know there's the lead line inventory that was done a couple of years ago, that's kind of ongoing process with the state. I just wanted to ask Chet, what do you have?
We'll, we'll get Chet to go into that in just a second and his comments, because yeah, there's, there's always something going on with that, for sure. Any other questions? Okay. Ready to vote? How about a roll call vote?
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffing.
Yes.
Lockwood.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Isman.
Yes.
Do we have any new business? Okay. Any old business? A second? Okay.
So the, that service line project is actually the top of the list. Working on an engineering report that is due with the grant application on the 30th. And that is for continuing projects, the replacement, now we're done in Georgia, next step is replacement, or required by EPA to replace 10% of the service lines throughout the city per year. It's a 10-year program. However, they give you, they're giving the means of it, they give you a 20-year lease, so you can do 0-0, 30%, if you wanted to pick it off that way. But we're going to have that application in to at least get, maybe as much as we can, at least 10% by the 30th. So that's, that's, I'm going, we should do that, or do some of that, please. Memory filtration project, we should see a contract with ESSR Associates for the supply and installation of the memory filter. See that contract come through the June council meeting. We also had a strategic investment, strategic compliance plan that we put together, required by the DOH for this water emergency, about this past month. Especially as the rentals get, the memory filtration's getting, it's time to re-sanding the Houston waters, those low-sand quotas this year, to metering operation, and that's additional metering throughout the system to target areas with larger leaks, so we can start to hone in on producing the amount of water that we need to produce in the city. Also, we see our 2024 water quality report, completed then, two weeks ago now. St. Tappus is just starting to go out today, and it should be online for the sewage issue. Starting this practice in the mail. Water replacement project, based on a people plan, that is moving forward at kickoff meetings Friday. I have a better schedule for the council in the next, I think next week, so. Watershed supply, so we have the DEC Watershed Control Permit. They're requiring us to complete by September. Started working on that pretty aggressively now. We have a scope called DEC set for, it's next week. And then we're going to, we've got a couple of projects at the watershed, and have, have to be simultaneous today. We want to make sure that we don't have duplication of effort, or we might be spending money that we don't need to spend in one direction. So I think there's some cost savings we can get there in that conversation with DEC, and also the work we're doing with Spruce Lake Day. So moving forward, and that one, Smith, pretty fast hospital project. Another video, we're going to complete that in July, contract just started in June. It's going to be super quick construction, as you're talking about. I've already looked at the hospital for that coordination. And lastly, I had the chip payment for this year. It's been a discussion the last week or so. Sorry, I can hear now what we can do with money that we, that we have available, so we'll be, we'll have the discussion as well.
Great, thank you.
Please.
Any questions for Chet?
Yeah, I got one. When we replace a light bike, who would be care, how would determine who goes first or the last?
So there's really, it's really up to us, it's up to the city. And the way that, the way that I would want to structure that is that the people that will go first would be in the area that we want to complete chip payments, we're following here. So anywhere we care to go, sidewalks, curves, et cetera, we want to patch that up and essentially have a clean site when we're done. So if we can follow along with our chip payment, or at least for the first part of this 10-year program, that's the best way to start. And there, we'll see what goes.
What if they have a bike freezer closet in there? Can you get ahead of the line?
You may be able to, if there's a difficult situation, that could be possible.
Anything else? Okay. And the next, a mayor comments. As usual, we'll go over the finances, where our cash position today is 784 million, 133. Take that back, it's not a million. I wish, wishful thinking. 784,133, that's the general fund of water and the sewer funds. Plus, we have 888,680 in our reserve fund. And the reserve fund is typically, for those who don't know, it's grant money that comes in that is allocated to certain things, or it is savings that we set aside for payments that we know are coming up. Currently, we're standing about 211,000 in our 60-day payables, or another 94,000 in our 90-day payables. Total outstanding invoices, 432,580. We are still working with delay in payments. The 60 days is pretty much been what we've had to do to survive. And we are probably going to continue that for the time being, holding bills as we prepare for repayment of the TAN. So we, last year, we took out a $2 million TAN that will be due in June, July. Also, we've started consolidating our outstanding bands into a bond. That is going into effect, is that July as well?
Yeah, no, it's about June.
June, okay. And that's 974,000. So the point here was that we would consolidate all the debt that we had that was outstanding, the bands, some of the things we could consolidate, others we couldn't. But if we put them into vans, we can push them out a few years, which gives us a little breathing room. So that's happening. We've also started discussions about, we talked earlier today about looking at a June, maybe an adjustment to the budget if we need to. And I think we'll probably need to take another look at it. We just want the time to analyze it right now and see how we're coming along. And then we, we did end up losing 56,000 in revenue from an assessment suit that we were involved in, and it is what it is. So part of it, the complex part of it, it was equalization, sometimes works really well, sometimes it doesn't. Typically, the state, when they do an equalization, because we haven't assessed values since 1972, they make an assumption of other own as to where we should be, what should be the market rate. And in some cases, it works out great, and it's very fair. In other cases, like manufacturing and things like that, it tends to go high. And in this particular case, it went pretty high. So we knew we were going to have to chisel it down, but it was painful to, to take this hit. But it is what it is. We have begun the city tax collection, so that, they just went out. And so that's one of the things, we did have a correction that those who typically pay on the payment, the re-levee payment, the schedule, they'll be getting a corrected version shortly. The corrected payments didn't match the, because of the computer issue, did not match the total. So when you add them up, it didn't come to the same amount as the total. So people who have re-levee will see another one with the accurate numbers on there. We, moving on to new and exciting things, we've had three new businesses on Main Street this month. Trusted Technologies, they're at 572 East Main. That's Kyle Stevens, Kurt Naran, and Kevin Julia. They've been opened, they were one of the first ones at the beginning of the month. The other day, we have Griff Tea Photography, 590 East Main Street. Griffin Talbot is the owner, she's a delight. She's doing photography for babies, infants, and pregnancies. So she's got some, it's almost like where you would go in there, and all the outfits are there, and you just dress the baby and the pregnant lady, and they, they get almost like a glamour shot. Very, very good work. The next one is Venture Fourth, and if you haven't been in there yet, you really should go. 590 East Main Street, that's Samantha Prime, I think that's spelled incorrectly. John Kilmancheck Jr., both of them have done a wonderful job sourcing things that are particular to our area, fishing, hunting, rock climbing. There's everything you can imagine, so stop by there if you have a chance. And they are in, both the Photography and the Venture Fourth are in the Old Boston store, if you know where that is. And I think we talked mostly about water, so I don't have to go through that with you. The Grants, DRI Downtown Improvement, there's been a little bit of movement on this particular one. We had a challenge with a lot of our businesses, $25,000 minimum was a lot for them. So we went to the Jim Thatcher, and I went through the state to request that we amend the contract to see if we could get it lowered. We really wanted it down to 7,500, we got 10,000. So we'll be coming back to people soon, once we get our urban renewal person up and running, on the smaller things that they could do for 10,000. And that would be like, could be equipment, could be a pizza oven, could be something small that would be reasonable for them. On any kind of overhaul of the structure, building, that would still be a $25,000 minimum. But it opens up some, up the opportunity to others that couldn't qualify before. So I think that was a very good thing. We didn't get everything we wanted, but we got something, so. Main Street Canopy and Streetscaping, that DRI, still on hold at the moment, and that's by our request, until we see some improvements in the city's debt-to-income ratio. We're just, we're not there yet. We've got to stabilize first in the essential things. We have five years to start the project, so we signed the document in '24, January of '24, so we still have some leeway there. Sealy Street, we're waiting for the Canal Corporation to really get underway with the Sky Bridge. That project is still moving through final permitting with the federal government. And initial, we need the initial construction to get out of the way, the big trucks, rather than to spend our money putting up Sealy Street only to have it, you know, dug up with big construction vehicles. So that's, that's where we are with that. Any questions? Okay. If there's nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We are adjourned.